I don't know how that process works. Is that what you're pretending to listen?
Yeah, that's okay. Hey, yes.
It doesn't bother me. Joe always talks about it, makes me laugh.
He does, he, he loves me. There we go. How about you guys? How about you guys, how are you doing?
Great.
I just flew in. Yeah, where, what are you? Angle. It's kind of weird to come and visit.
It's in the garden.
You have a spare room?
No, we'll just do seven. Just keep it named Seven.
Oh, eight.
We all gonna order the book? Why, sir, what's his name, what's his name?
No, I actually don't know. I think for Science Attack.
Oh. You're on it. I didn't remember most of them, that's true. The gist, like, yeah, oh. Yeah, that was when you had one on one.
That's a very exciting one.
Oh, my goodness.
This is the guy who's the borough manager, has a second career. That was even flimy.
Oh, my gosh, those stupid.
Mechanicsburg Borough Council meeting and committee session will come to order. I'll start with an announcement that we had an executive session on a matter of personnel that started at four thirty, not three thirty, in correction to the agenda. As an announcement, the meetings of Mechanicsburg Borough Council are being recorded and livestreamed for the purposes of transparency and increased public access. The livestream, along with the recordings of previously held meetings, can be accessed on the Borough's YouTube channel. And we will now have the pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which serves us, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all. Will call up, please. Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here. Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Solicitor James.
Here.
And Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Kate Myers.
Here.
Mrs. Baer. Chair Nancy Arnold.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Superintendent Uwe.
Yeah.
We have a four.
Thank you. Are there any items to add or remove from the consent agenda or regular agenda? Yes, we are removing the approval of Resolution seven twenty five, updating the park rules, reflecting new hours for Frank and Bynum Park. And we'll add that to a future meeting. Any other additions or removals from the consent agenda or regular agenda? Hearing none, any amendments or changes to the proposed minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Salute.
Vice President Anthony moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Agerton seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, the agenda is approved. Moving on to citizens' comment, anyone here for citizens' comment, citizen trace?
Ron Trace, three oh four North Arch Street, what I wanted to talk about is first of all, I think going in your item number three in there was a mistake. It says no person other than an officer of law. Is that the officer?
Likely. Yep.
And that was one, that was one thing I wanted to say about is, in your, for him, the consent is going to be said about three hours, Frank and Bynum Park, but no one here says anything about Frank and Bynum Park.
That's why we.
And I'm always seeing lines in, it says park's supposed to be open during like the winter hours from, or from the summer hours till ten P M, and during the winter hours till eight P M, well, we often times don't come home until later at night, and we take our dog out. We go for walking, go get back from the market before, it was a bad market, well, according to this, we can use the walking path, because a lot of people will use that walking path. I don't think that's, that's fair to everybody, because I'd rather use the walking path as opposed to some of these streets and alleys that are, they're not too good. Actually, basically, that's my consideration, but I do think that, because it seems like this whole, this whole thing here, I don't know what you're praying on going for, in terms of taking the park, but it seems that most of this is still changed to Memorial Park itself and everything, so. The other thing is, how do you enforce this? There's nothing that they said about enforcing this, although, I realize it's a resolution, not an ordinance, so, I know there's a difference there. It's something else for me to consider also, you know, on walking the dog, if, you don't know, because you want to go out and everything, and you take the walking path, and one of the members of the police department stops me, you know, what, what we were, you know, nothing says anything about that here at all.
Thank you, appreciate the comments. Anyone else for citizens' comment? Ms. York?
Good evening, I'm Becky Derrick, she's in East College Street. I'm going to read my comments and then follow for the record. In a cost-saving move, council recently approved shifting the placement of all legal notices to the Patriot News as opposed to the Sentinel. Both letters required publications of general circulation, speakers of general circulation. To the Borough Association, this is a hearty perennial, I talk about this all the time, why shouldn't, wouldn't, couldn't the Borough post legal notices on their website and save money, except for trying to be here? I'm not suggesting you end that, of course, you can't do that, end the legal notices, meaning they're paid, they're ads, but why not also post them on the Borough website? We talk a lot about transparency, but I betcha, I'm the only one here that reads all of the legal notices every single day, whoops, they only publish three times a week. Adding them to your website makes them available twenty-four seven for those interested, potentially interested, or those who ought to be interested in the ad subject. Public hearings, ordinances, zoning requests, special exceptions, business loans, contract bidding, I suspect we'll approve a couple of those tonight here. Taxation, certain borough expenditures, meetings to create the budget, I'm often the only one there, but that doesn't mean I'm the only one who cares. It costs nothing to add this any bit of information and an added dose of transparency. The ads already been typed for the newspaper insertion, you email it to Penn Live, you can post it to the website and or Facebook. Perhaps not as captivating as Movies in the Park or Waste Wednesday, but a step forward in again transparency and simply alerting all, adding an important layer of information. Both papers are great in helping me help you with a lot of things, a lot to the newspaper industry, starting next week, I'll owe them a lot more because my online subscription is going from fifty ninety-five to one hundred ninety-two dollars, a one, a three hundred fifty percent increase. That's just the way it is, that we don't have to starve for information. Posting legal notices may not be required, but it would be responsible and, yes, transparent.
Thank you, Ms. York, we appreciate the idea, I think it's a good idea, a good way to get ahead of the, hopefully, the law that will be passed. But we, I just want to note that it was not just done, the move to the Patriot was not just done for a cost-saving measure, the advertisement in the Sentinel, it would not reach people in time, it would not be enough time to get into certain publications for our meetings, so that was the main reason, the cost savings was an added bonus. So, is there any other citizens' comment? Hearing none, moving on to mayor's report.
No report tonight, thank you, no report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Saluted.
Vice President Anthony moves, is there a second?
A second.
Councilman O'Neill seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda items are approved. Moving on to the regular agenda.
First item tonight, discussion and action to authorize the advertisement of Center Square West Project RFP.
Thank you, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilwoman Agerton makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Vice President Anthony seconds. Any discussion?
This is the second time, Lane, that we've advertised for this, is that correct?
Well, this is a different scope, but in general, the second time.
Okay.
It's a different, different scope that encompasses both the west and the east portion. And, Mr. John Gazin, can you articulate what the next date structure, like when the next step in the process would be?
So, now that we have approved the project, the advertisements will go out, first the advertisements Thursday, and then the meeting, the contract is coming next week, it's Wednesday, and following that, we'll use the time to prepare the bids, and we'll also have our bids received by May thirteenth for approval of the bid as well as for our company.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next item, presentation, discussion, and action to authorize the advertisement of the refuse and recycling contract RFP.
Is there a motion? We just have presentation discussion. Let's start with the presentation.
All right, so the, this presentation is on the twenty twenty-six trash and recycling contract RFP and specifications, so, excellent. To kick it off, just to review current process, the process through the bid, subcommittee, and all the specifications, so our current contract for services is with Penn Waste, which was recently bought by Waste Connections. Our current contract is a three-year contract with two one-year extensions that started in twenty twenty-one, so we are nearing the end of that full five-year contract period, which expires in December thirty-first. So this is the reasoning for going through this new contract process to look for a new hauler, excellent. Under the current contract, we have several weekly services, including curbside trash and recycling, curbside weekly large and bulky items, weekly white goods and appliances, and weekly yard waste collection from March through October. On the first meeting of the subcommittee, their goal was clear, to provide equal or better services at the best value with a competitive bidding process through finding a new hauler. Excellent. So through the process, we went through a series of steps, the first was kicking off the bid process and forming the subcommittee, the second was meeting with haulers, so branch staff met with haulers to determine the current landscape of waste services in the area, looking for any major changes or major considerations that haulers were looking for. One of those was cart collection and providing carts as a competitive bid element in the new contract. Our current step is step five, which is council review of the bid documents and approval for advertisement. Following that approval, we're still on track for a final contract approval in July, which would allow four to six months of public engagement, awareness of the new program, communication methods through newsletters and bill backs, social media, which will allow the time to communicate any of these changes, any of the additions through the new contract. Yeah, so that's from a process perspective, and then I will kick it off to Carl and Glenda from the subcommittee to touch on additional elements with the specifications.
Hello, I'm Carl Hirsch, resident of the Mechanicsburg for thirty-some years, and I'm glad to be up here preaching recycling, and made many appearances in front of council in the past when we had a different program. The state of the art now, particularly in Cumberland County, is to have collection in carts, and it became evident that we weren't going to get competitive bids from the existing service providers unless we included carts in the, in the specification. So, that's why we're going down this route now, so that we could get maybe three bids rather than one. The cart service that we're talking about is going to replace the pay-as-you-throw program that we have, the orange bags, and we're going to have an incentive for people to waste less and recycle more. And examples of the carts are down here, small is thirty-five gallon, the middle one is sixty-four gallons, and the large one is ninety-six gallons, you might think, well, this is three bears. So residents are going to have a choice to select the bin that they feel is appropriate for them. And the Borough will be working out the price for the service based on the size of the carts, and it's expected that people that use the smallest cart will pay less than the people that use the largest cart. Advantage of the carts, they're on wheels, they're easy to move, they are animal-proof, there's a lid, they're weatherproof, and will also cut down on litter, because they have a lid. And we, having a larger recycling cart will give people the opportunity to recycle more and waste less. Personally, I'm going to go for the smallest cart, because I hardly make any garbage at all, I compost, and I recycle a lot. The other advantage of recycling more is that under the Department of Environmental Protection, Section nine oh four Recycling Performance Grant Program, the more that the Borough recycles, the greater the recycling performance grant will be at the end of each calendar year. The carts themselves will be owned by the haulers, the Borough won't have any cost involved at all with that, except for the bid price, and the carts will be available as early as January two thousand twenty-six. And residents will have an opportunity to select what cart they think they need, and then, once they get experience over six months of use, they'll have an opportunity to switch out a cart size, and that will be at the end of the second quarter, so the third quarter could begin with a new cart, and the successful bidder will be the one who will be responsible for switching off the carts and delivering them to the residents based on the preferred size, and this will be done at no cost to the resident themselves. So the first opportunity to have that switch will be after six months, and then after that, it will be at the end of each calendar year, much like the pay-as-you-throw program or the orange bag program now, people that want to participate in that program are surveyed in December, and then they make the switch, if there is a switch, in January. They, I mentioned three bears, that these containers are not bear-proof. If they're in the places all over the country, they do have bear-proof containers, but they will deter smaller mammals from messing with the garbage. In my situation, I have an orange bag that I put out sixteen times a year, and I always put it out first thing in the morning, so that if I have any garbage in there that might attract animals, it won't attract them, people collection. Now we'll have these hard carts that will deter any animals from messing with it. Lemon?
Good evening, I'm Glenda Blair, and I live at four thirteen South Frederick Street in Iowa State Environment, I'm Board Street Council Representative on this committee. The only resident that came to any of our committee meetings was a Friday resident, and he came because they have a problem on Friday with this trash collection. While we only have one resident, I know for many years working here, that Friday is the most difficult collection day, because if they are missed for any reason, the makeup day is Saturday, and it seems as if the haulers have a hard time with the Saturday collection, and then people are asked to put out double on Friday, however, if they don't have sufficient container, that poses a problem, and then they have bags, and rodents filling the bags, et cetera. The four-day week would allow for the extra pickup day on holidays and snow days to be on Friday when people are still in the office, and they can still reach out if they have a problem with their collection. We think that would make it better for particularly our Friday collections, but also give that extra day for holiday weeks as well. And we think that, you know, the haulers have indicated they can still pick up three or four days what they're not picking up on Friday, that's not a problem.
One of the enhancements we're going to have to the existing program is that we're going to add nine additional weeks for yard waste collection. People are going to be able to set out their yard waste for collection after they schedule it with the Borough, and they will be able to put out as much yard waste as they want. They have to be in a portable container, or as you can see in the picture, craft paper bags, and all that material will be collected by the contractor and taken to the Borough in Silver Springs campus facility. There's not going to be, I, excuse me if I'm repeating myself, there's not going to be any limit on what they can be set out, and the program's going to stay essentially the way it is now. The contractor will pick which day of the week will be the day for yard waste collection, and then residents must call the Borough Office the day before they're just out of collection, and we're going to schedule it. Look, I don't know offhand how many tons per year that is, but it's, it's not a great amount of material in terms of the overall collection of this type of contract. I think we're going to be for ten tons, estimating ten tons a year?
I'd have to go back and check, I can't remember what the exact number was.
It's in the law. So, we're looking at this as a way to provide more service as costs are going to rise for this collection, not for the yard waste collection per se, but the overall collection of recyclables and trash.
Yard waste is six tons per month.
Six, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Six tons per month is the current estimate. So we're hoping that this is a plus for residents as they're facing, or will likely to face as other municipalities in Cleveland County, face higher collection.
The contract this time will be for five years rather than three. So I did a lot of research, a lot of community use to look for contracts, and then he felt that by having a five-year contract with two-year extension, we could hopefully keep costs down a little and prevent some inflation by creating a minimum amount of increase for contract here as part of the document. I think that with the change to four days, the five-year contract will be important because it will be new for both the resident and the hauler, so we're looking to look for adjustment to the new days and the new schedule, and hopefully help to limit the amount of inflation that we see over the life of the contract.
So, to summarize some of these enhancements, the most recognizable is going to be the carts, no, there's no doubt, and that's going to be quite an adjustment for residents, and it's going to take a lot of effort in the four or five months that we have to educate people on how the carts are going to be used and what options they have. The four-day contract, there's a four-day collection route, Glenda mentioned, is going to provide opportunity for a makeup day if collections are missed. Naturally, there are weather events that force collections to be moved, sometimes on a day basis, one-day basis, sometimes even more, so that's going to be enhancement that's going to primarily benefit the people that are on the fifth day of collection now. The carts also provide an incentive to recycle more and waste less, and it's going to be the cost savings for the people that want to choose a smaller volume cart. I mentioned a little reduction earlier, and the fact that these aren't bear-proof, but they're going to reduce the opportunity for animals, small mammals, to mess with the trash.
Still, everything is being provided as currently being provided, we're not eliminating or reducing any of the services.
Ask a quick question, just pragmatically, if I choose the small cart because I'm not using as much trash on a regular basis, but in a particular week I have more trash than what would fit in there, how do I resolve that?
The collector will not pick up anything that isn't in a cart.
Okay.
That's for the terms of the cart right now.
Okay.
It has to be the cart.
Okay, so I'm holding on to my trash for an extra week.
But residents can use different methods to reduce, like at Christmas time, you can put all your wrapping paper and dry things into one garbage receptacle, and if you can't put it all out one week, you can fill that, it's not.
Fill it up for the next week.
The following week, I think some of it is going to involve a little common sense on the user.
Got it.
And we're looking at, at the recycling program as an enhancement, with having that big cart and doing a lot of education, and moving to a single-stream recycling program, which opens up a little bit more for the recycling.
Okay, good.
So I think that you're going to find, if you have a recycling bin like that, you're going to fill it up more, especially like at Christmas with packaging and stuff like that, a lot of it is recyclable, and we also, were we asking about cereal boxes to be able to?
I was just asking.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, sorry, go ahead, that's your thing.
We're going to, in the RFP, we're going to ask for additional materials to be included that aren't included at present. For instance, office paper, paper board, which is not cardboard, but it's paper board that is used in things like Kleenex boxes and cereal boxes. I don't know whether we'll be able to include magazines or not, but there is a very limited market for magazines now, but magazines and catalogs are disappearing anyway. But we're going to ask for those additional materials to be included, mostly under mixed office paper and junk mail. But it's going to be up to the contractor to tell us what they're able to process. So we'll ask, they'll decide, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you. One or two real quick questions. Thanks for all your hard work, this is important stuff, thanks, Luke. Carts, is it one cart per payee? Or can a payee have more than one cart for each type of disposable item, i.e. recycling versus non-recycling?
Actually, we have not discussed that. But at minimum, you're going to get two carts.
A recycling, one for trash. Right. So the question I would have is, can a payee add an additional cart?
Yes.
And if so, what would the cost be to that payee, if any?
Well, we did project that there might be some people that want the largest cart, and they might want two.
Right.
So the cost would be double of what one cart would be.
And are we going to have a breakdown of the recycling cart cost for the pickup and the non-recyclable for pickup? So they want two non-recyclable, one recyclable. Is there a charge for the recycling?
I'm going to have to defer to Luke.
And then, Luke, I'll just flesh this out a little bit more. If we're wanting to encourage recycling and we're going to get a credit on the recycling that we want to offer, an incentive by having a lower cost to getting another recycling or no cost to getting another recycling, while somebody's producing that much recycled material?
I can say in the bid form, which is what contractors will be filling out at their pricing the services, it's one number for the full range of services. The trash, the recycling, the yard waste, the appliances are all included in one price. And that helps to ensure that the pricing of that is equal across the contractors, that they're not doing different things based on service levels or anything. So we won't have an individual breakdown of each service and what that service costs.
That's okay, I was thinking of an add-on cost.
Right now, there is an added cost for delivery, so if you were to get new carts delivered, if you were switching or anything like that. But as Carl said, we hadn't talked about adding on additional units, and if that would be an additional full unit, or if that would be like a pair percentage based on...
Yeah, right. Would that be something you could look into maybe in going out?
Sure.
The...my mother lives in Indian Creek, and I've been spending a great deal of time there, and I've been observing their trash pickup, which is this system. And some of her neighbors have multiple large cans or multiple recycling cans for that home. And that is really what spurred my question tonight. But I see that that's already happening where she lives.
Based on experience.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they've been doing it for a while, that's Hampton Township.
I think, I think when you look to write, I think almost all the municipalities around us have moved to a cart system, like Charme's, you know, and not only, it's safer for the picker-uppers too, so it's a great service.
That's neat to watch, they're fast.
And after the seven-year contract period, if we have the same contractor the entire time, the contractor, since they own the containers, are going to be responsible for switching them out at the end of the contract. If they're not successful, they're the next one.
The only...I'm sorry, go ahead.
I apologize.
No, no, you're good.
The only other thing I might add is that I can see the potential of people saying, "Well, I'll get the smaller one because it's less expensive, but there's no way that's big enough for their trash needs." And if they have to wait a full six months, I'm just envisioning the mountains of trash that will build. So I'm uncertain about where to go with that, but it's a question.
So one of the things that we talked about in our meetings was that if a resident doesn't select the right bin, that there could be a fee associated with switching it out, that there would be something if they did. So, you know, we did ask people to look and estimate, estimate how much garbage they're putting out. I know that that sometimes is a tough thing, I think that's why we have those bins out there to look at. But, you know, we don't set the prices right now, so we're waiting for it. So I know a lot of people are attributing their selection to the price, and I understand that. But it's, that's not an answer that we have at this point. So it really, unless you want to stick your garbage in the freezer, that was your suggestion, I would get a, I think, sorry, Carl did not say that. Just make sure, yeah, yeah.
Just the wet, the key stuff?
But I would advise, you know, like, that you really have to be realistic, or make really good friends with your neighbors, that will allow you to put some trash in there.
Well, there is another potential solution, depending upon what numbers come back from the hauler or the vendor, is a little economic manipulation of pricing might go a long way if it's a five-dollar difference, whether that's borough set or hauler set.
We didn't mention, we did, the borough conducted a survey by postcard. And as of last week, there were nearly a thousand responses, which was twenty-one percent, I believe.
Correct, thirty-four now, thirty-one percent.
And I think majority of people were going for the middle, the middle bin.
That was a lot larger response than we thought we would get.
A surprising response, as the most of them came back with the standard, which the cart clearly said, "If you don't respond, you're going to have the standard." That's really interesting.
So that middle one comes recycle and non-recycle?
So everyone will have recycle and pay?
No, I'm looking at the yellow, it's on the middle size, but that's just, so they all come.
I'm sorry, the recycle is the same size as what you asked for, or is that...
Right, that the recycle's the same size as your trash cart, yeah.
So if you get the larger, you get two larges.
Oh, so if you want the big recycle bin, you have to get the big trash bin.
And the reverse is true? Okay.
Yeah, it would be...
Yes, that's true?
Like, the low is two of the small ones, the medium is two of the medium ones.
Gotcha.
So you have one for trash and recycle.
Gotcha. If it's damaged during the six-month trial period or at any point or whatever, who's paying to have it replaced?
The property of them, so they'll replace it. The garbage company will replace it, yeah.
They will, okay.
And one thing I didn't mention, I skipped over, the borough schedules the lead collection, the borough also schedules the collection of appliances, weight goods, and that's going to continue to be the same.
So we do that now, the administrative people does that now? I did think that's a lot of work perhaps, but if we're doing it now, Mr. Manager?
No, I think they've studied the problem immensely in their working group, and I think they're on the right track. I think it's...
How many meetings have they met?
Yeah.
Let's give them credit.
It's a lot.
They've met a lot.
How did they solve the problem of our small alleys and acquiring these carts?
We're going to have to move garbage routes.
Oh.
Yeah, so that'll be part of the learning process. Some of them you'll be able to navigate, but some of them might have to be moved. And we'll do that education once we get the bidding process.
Got it.
There's still some question in alleys on some of the busier residents, particularly Simpson, along Main Street.
How do they handle vehicle parking and pickup on a main bar?
They get out and they move on. Like, when it's on Simpson, they're going to have to get out.
Is that how that works?
Yeah, I think they get out and they move the bin to where they can pick it up with the automated arms.
Yeah, and then they put it back down, and do they move it back, or do they leave it wherever?
That's a good question.
I don't know.
Let's hope for it.
Mine are usually laying down in the middle of the road, so...
That's where mine aren't.
In Indian Creek, it's literally pick it up, put it down, and it's on the, it's on the curb.
Yeah.
But if there's a car in the way...
Well, they don't pick it up. I saw, seen them drive by it.
Oh, wow.
There, but I don't know what...
Yeah, it's going to be different when you're talking about main traffic roads versus, you know, non. So obviously Simpson and Main would be a different, but do we do pickup, will we do pickup on Main, will we have different route for Main?
Main is on the alleys.
This is Simpson.
And maybe market.
Sure. So high-level overview, this is the full scale of the process. So the subcommittee was formed January twenty-fourth. That was followed by nine subcommittee meetings over the course of two and a half months, three months. Those are weekly meetings. Today, we're at April fifteenth, which is the approval for advertisement. Again, if we're, if we stick to the same schedule, we're looking at the bids being returned to us by June second, four council meetings for discussion and approval of the final contract award, and then four to six months of public outreach and communication for a start date of January second, twenty-twenty-six.
It's a big undertaking. Thanks for all your work and the committees' work on it so far, that's huge.
Thank you.
Are you people using this system like this?
They are not.
Not. Is there any borough with a parking situation that we have using it that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. I did look at Carlisle's, Camp Hill's, Silver Spring, like the immediate areas around us.
Charme's?
I'm not sure, I didn't look at their contract.
We do need to take action for the advertisement.
I'll make that motion.
Councilwoman Agerton moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Burek seconds. Is there a chance we could address Mr. Burek's concerns regarding the additional pricing of an additional tote before advertisement?
Sure. Make it part of the RFP.
And just procedurally and for the record, this is actually going to be an invitation to bid, not an RFP. So it's going to go to the lowest responsive bidder as opposed to an RFP, so just keeping that in mind in terms of scope.
So we're in discussion. One nuisance question, this is a, this is a five-year contract with two one-year extensions for a seven-year contract on a new procedure, new process that we've never done and we have no experience in. I'm wondering if we have a Hail Mary clause in here somewhere that we can bail on this if we, you know, a few years back, and actually, Glenda, you might remember this, and I certainly won't remember the details, but we changed, the borough changed from one hauler to another, and boy, that was a disaster.
We had a three-year contract with possibly one-year extension with the contract. After three years, we decided to go out to bid, largely because we had a lot of missteps and a lot of problems with collection. But in fairness to Republic, you know, that was probably now, that was two contracts ago, so ten years ago, I'm sure they have made changes. In fact, the gentleman who works in Republic at that time is now a waste manager. So, you know, things change over time, but for a free tenant price perspective, if we don't have competition, how, why are we having a bid? I mean, if we've done the parts, we will have one bidder who's agreed to bid on it, the other two have said that they're not. And we can't have any competitive bidding under those circumstances. And the parts still have a lot of benefit, we're just coming up to see what other communities have been doing with it.
Yeah, I'm perfectly in agreement with all of that. My only concern was if, if unexpected problems arise and it's a large issue, do we have, do we have something in the contract that's a bail?
Would that be a breach of contract issue? Is that what you're saying, or, because isn't that how that would be handled?
Not being an attorney, I'm going to defer to an attorney. However, for me, from a public service perspective, it's just, if we have a, if we have a fail on this brand-new project that we have no experience in doing, and we don't seem to have a municipality similar to ours nearby that we've looked at that's doing it, I just want to make sure that we have some way of addressing that, we're not locked into this for...
Are you saying a fail that doesn't rise to the level of a breach of contract on their end?
Yeah, you know, we have a ton of unhappy people, how do we get out?
Disagree with the level of service, for example.
Well, that was essentially the problem that we had ten years ago.
You would be able to, at the end of the five year, you wouldn't have to extend, but the difference would be you would be walking for five instead of three years.
Yeah, right.
But there are safeguards in the contract for non-performance if the hauler doesn't perform any of that. But most of the time, if there's a problem, staff first tries to work with the municipal manager to resolve those problems, regardless of who the hauler is, that would be the first step to sit down, have the borough manager and Mr. Arnold meet with them and discuss the shortcomings and try to get improved purchase. I mean, they're business, they're in business, they want our business, so usually they'll try to meet us, you know, halfway, I think that they make an effort.
I think, I think the concern, I, because I'm hearing what Councilman Burek is saying, I think the concern is, is that we don't really have an option not to use the cart system. So it will be, and we know that there's going to be a huge period of adjustment for everybody, but if we don't have that cart system in play, what is going to happen is we will not have an economical bid that comes in for our community members, because we know that only one garbage company will give us that, and they're going to price us up, up, up. So it behooves them to fulfill their contract, and I do think that we should look at that closely for performance, but we also, for us, part of it is going to be education ongoing with our community members about when to do it, how to do it, and to increase our recycling. Is that like...
Well, thank you.
I mean...
What's the further term?
In a scenario like this, based on what I understand you're asking, what I would recommend as opposed to a breach of contract is that you just write an evaluation period into your terms of the contract.
That's right. We had a contract recently that we had a similar concern, and we, we added a clause that we had an out within the first twelve months, remember? We had an out, we had an out within the first twelve months, if it wasn't working.
Evaluation.
It just, I have no problem with the cart system.
Yeah, well, and I, and I don't have a problem with it, but twelve months is a really short amount of time, I think. Maybe, like, if you wanted to look at, then we could go back to a three-year contract, but I think we were doing five because we were hoping to get a better price. And that's...
Understood.
Yeah, so I, it's complicated, but yeah, I hear where you're at. But I, I think for me, if I, if I were looking at a bid and selling out, I'd be concerned that we put all that work into changing everything in the borough, and then we're not going to work on the problems. So I don't know. Carl, you're the expert on the contract language, what are you thinking about that?
I think it's a good point, Mr. Burek has, and...
What time line would you look at for an evaluation period? Twelve months?
We could compromise in the twenty-four months.
It would be more comfortable, I think. I mean, it gives, it gives the vendor reason to want to work with, to work it out.
Yeah. Can we, so we know the price is going to be higher because we're asking for a twenty-four month review?
Well, why don't we wait and see what the bids are? No, we can't do that.
We're locked in, so can we just put, can we ask for a menu, though, with and without? Would that be...
Gives them the idea to mark it up, but we could.
Yeah.
Glenda? We could always, do we have to take the bid, or do we, can we rebid?
The lowest responsive bid? I believe you can rebid.
So if we don't get what we're looking for, we could always go back.
To the same three people.
Yeah, well, they're going to verbally tell us, "Hey, with this contract out, we're going to penalize you, you get a better price." I would be fine with that, if we put it in and just asked in the, in the invitation to bid, and then if we don't get bids that make sense, or if you think it should have been lower, you can ask the question, "Hey, if this twenty-four-month trial was not here, would, would it come down?" And if they say yes, it would come down, we could rebid.
Or you could discuss it with them at the bidding meeting too. If they all indicate that they're going to analyze this for the twenty-four months, you can come back to that. There's a pretty good meeting to find about this in April.
That's it.
But to your question about carts, right now...
I don't have a question about carts.
Additional carts.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Right now, we don't have carts, but if you called Ten Waste and asked for a cart, they would bring you one and charge you so much a month.
Right.
Since they already provide that service, I'm sure that we can get a price per cart if somebody wants to do it.
Oh, nice.
Because people buy a legacy cart and receive carts on Ten Waste, and they bill them separately for those carts. They pay, we pay for the collection, they pay them just for the amount of the cart.
I will, I will just add very briefly that the carts really look nice, too. I will just, I will just add very briefly that the carts really look nice, too. I mean, it's a lot nicer than seeing everybody's awful trash bins, and...
If they use trash bins, that's the other thing. Why do people just put their garbage out?
Because it's going to be a change, and it's going to take time for residents.
And my seventy-seven-year-old mother, who now is quite ill, but before she was, was able to get that thing down quite, quite a steep driveway every week and get it back up. They look a little daunting, but they're really user-friendly.
So, Councilman Birick, the other service that has been offered, you may not know this, that if you have a disability, they, they can do two-door service.
Wasn't that nice?
I didn't know that, that seems...
Yeah, that's very nice. Thank you.
You had mentioned that the cost of the current one, or not using carts, was going to go up and would be more maybe than what the carts are going to be. Do you know that, or do you sense that?
Well, I, I think that's the economy we live in, where everything's going up. And so, when we look at the prices of surrounding municipalities, like, that's the trend, it's going up. And there's not a lot of competition in the garbage market.
So, we have a sense of what this is going to cost, when, and if we don't like the, what it comes back at, we can go back to the non-cart way of doing it. If it comes back quadruple what we're paying now.
So, I, I think what the feeling was is that if you did not use the carts, that we were going to be outpriced, because we would only have one garbage company that would give us that bid. And that's our concern, is that that price would be very steep, and we would look at a huge dump in price of garbage collection.
And labor is a big part of the collection, which current trucks require two individuals. These trucks only require one individual, so they're cutting their labor costs in half, and labor and fuel are two of their biggest costs.
And they're faster.
Right, I'm just saying, we don't know.
I think as a, as a, an educational bit of information, it might be nice to know what the new cost would be on the old system. I wonder if they would give us a price just for comparisons.
You'd have to go out.
You'd have to put a bid out. You'd have to have a separate bid for that.
Yeah, I know. What I'm saying is if we had an idea, not that we're going to go with that service, but our current hauler could probably guesstimate what their, what their cost would be. Anyway.
What would the incentive be for it?
It's public relations, it's public information. If we stay with the old system, it's this price estimated, if we go with the new system, it's this price.
Yeah, I think I...
Does that mess up the bid?
Yeah, I mean, maybe. We could, we could definitely inquire, but I think that, you know, there's a lot of complications that go into it, like who owns landfills, who owns the recycling companies, and it's really dominated by one company.
Nine weeks of this, it was...
Yeah.
Nine.
We'll invite you to the next one.
Nine. Yeah.
You could bid on everything in the garbage, when you make a call for that, you would know carts, and some companies won't bid, and I can't bid because I'm not bidding on everything on the table.
It is a good question, but it doesn't seem...
Okay.
I'm pretty sure that didn't change, they have to bid on everything.
It's a good educational piece.
And I'll tell you that Glenda and Carl have been so fabulous in being able to navigate this and do research and bring experts into it, and also bring experts into the language of how we're presenting the bid. It's been very, very helpful to have people that have done this in a lot of municipalities and places to, to provide us that structure.
Thank you.
I thank them.
So, we're clear on the motion, and clear on the motion?
So, I'll amend my motion to add the, that's with the prices for the cart.
I will second.
Great. Any further discussion or questions? There are none, all in favor?
Aye.
May opposed? Motion passes.
Next action, discussion and action to authorize the advertisement of the Sewer Department heavy maintenance contract, RFP.
Thank you, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Martin makes the motions, they're second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Agarson seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May oppose? Motion passes. concludes the regular meeting. Now, we'll move to committee meetings and borough managers' reports.
My report's up to date as of today online, and I think it's as of Friday here in the, in your packet. The one thing I would call attention to is on the very last slide on public announcements, the Cumberland County Tire Collection Initiative has published their dates, and the link to sign up for that is, is, is on the slide as well. But the two pickup months are May and September, so please take a look, and, and if you have tires you need to get rid of, the program's a good one. All right? That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Public Works, uh, Finance Administration Ordnance, Mr. Anthony?
Nothing this evening.
Public Works on Safety?
Spirit, thank you. Senator Sewer Department reports, Superintendent Huey?
You guys just passed the motion for the emergency services contract. I just wanted to start, the emergency services contract covers both sanitary sewer and storm sewer repairs, as well as doing a number of sinkhole repairs. This contract was signed in January of twenty-twenty-one. In a four-year period, we did a total of forty-two sanitary sewer repairs. Under that contract, ten main repairs, ten manual repairs, the remaining repairs were sanitary sewer lateral repairs, connecting individual homes or properties to the sanitary sewer mains. There were seven sinkhole repairs and seven stormwater repairs. We expect, under the new contract, to do repairs to the Strawberry Alley, Paper Alley, and other repairs called for under the telebasing project we did not too long ago. And we expect at least one repair of a sinkhole in North Side. Uh, we stole a lot of retention basis.
Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
It took a lot of work, didn't it?
Too much work.
It does.
Too much work. Public Works Department, we have our engineer.
CH is not here tonight, but his slides are updated, so, but Ryan's here as well.
Ryan, do you have anything?
So, just general updates on a couple of projects, and the only one throughout the borough. First off, talking about Center Square, how much energy is scheduled to that? Had either a tenant or B M twenty-eight meeting, the goal is to start construction after Jubilee Day. That's the beginning of the study for that. As far as the relocating program work, we plan to start that to be made. We're finishing up the current side yard, we actually have a couple of properties that need to complete the work, and you kind of have to go back and do it for this, and there's no response to that. So, once that works complete, then we're able to coordinate the contract then, so we can start. And then the quarry project, it's, we're, we're completely, we've done this completely recently. So, the out, the current, I believe it's Arbor Day, to plant some new trees along the water, maybe. So, we'll get some new trees back in, and then things to assist of a, kind of a push to the environmental side, we're going to stabilize the banks of the, of the quarry itself, and then do some more plantings in the lower area. We're also looking at looking at the, the boardwalk view area, as well as the, the...
Can you comment on the depths of this quarry, since there's a lot of open legend out there?
I know there has been some, this, for the, so you can put an excavator in.
Someone's had a car.
Yes, so, when we went out and surveyed it, they took a kayak out, and it was found it would only be about five feet deep. I don't know if that's attributed to the sediment coming in from the stormwater system, so maybe slowly pulling it in through the process of time, but that's got its uses there.
Yeah, and I would like to applaud the borough in putting a great article out there about the quarry project. I think it really helped answer a lot of questions. Apparently, people did, did not like having that exposed, but those trees were invasive, and those trees were not really good for that environment. So, being able to plant trees that are, you know, native, and making sure that we're honoring the environments and getting that in and having something beautified, I think the article was beautiful, and I think the work is going to be an investment in our future, making Mechanicsburg a great place to live.
I will say, while they were finishing up the tree removal, they, part of the project was the placement of large wood debris, which is to cut down some of the bigger pieces of tree to create environments for species that are there in the meantime, while there are architectural trees alive around us, maybe. And we actually had a turtle crawl of all the trees, and it was, it seemed somewhat, it's all been removed, so...
Nice.
The environment is taking back over.
And the ducks are back.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
It, it looks good already, I mean, great improvement.
Yeah, it really is.
Great work.
Thank you. Public Safety Departments, let's start with our police chief, Chief Myers.
All the arrangements that have been made for Earth Day, as far as blocking the railways, material blocking the railways, no parking signs, Jubilee Day, all the things that I could do up to this point to get ready have been done. So, you know, we may have to get the CH on the Austin barricades, and that's it for the, for the day, pretty much.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief. Chief Neff, fire?
Yes, so, big news coming very soon. The, the most noticeable for the public to see with the fire department is the scheduled demolition that will be probably between now and the next council meeting with the site up at York Street. So, that's, that'll really jumpstart the public that we're getting really serious down the work with building new fire stations. So, we're excited to see that part of the plan developed. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Neff? Thank you, chief. Let's jump over to our Mechanicsburg volunteer fire department with President Neff.
No.
I did it again. I did that the last time. President Crace. I know.
Citizen, president.
Not here.
A man of all seasons.
Come on up. I just, you're just both so handsome. Were you? Really? Well, that must be why I'm...
Twins.
Oh, you wouldn't know it.
We've got, we've got a report that we turned in. Again, I just want to emphasize, I want to thank the borough, all the employees, the police department, everybody who helped us to secure the parking lot back on Strawberry and Orange, so we can put the tent up there, so the spot is now housed in there, and I know I filled a couple of phone calls and some comments, some concerns to citizens with the police department to close the whole parking lot off, but I told them, I said, it was not, it was not our decision. Saying it's open and it's being used by some of the area residents. I just want to thank you again about that. As Chief Neff, there's really two, things are really starting to come along with the, on the new station. Yesterday was a pre-bid meeting for the site work and the construction. I haven't received anything back regarding that yet, hopefully tomorrow, I will. So, we did package, we're gone out. April twenty-second, United Rentals will be there at the site to install the fencing. And probably the next day, I'm going to say, Patriot, it's a, wrecking... Whatever, Patriot's something, we'll be there to start the demolition, the first things are going to get down, order three houses, and then the, then the firehouse will come down. There are some issues with the firehouse we're not sure about, we're not, we're not going to know until it actually gets demolished. Then, that, so all, all demolition should be wrapped up in, in June. Hopefully by then, contracts would be awarded as far as to do, like, site work and construction. And we're looking at right now, then, with that work beginning, maybe towards the end of June or so. And right now, the way the schedule is, no pending weather or any other unforeseen circumstance, whatever, we're looking at, I think it's November of twenty-twenty-six, we're totally done. My understanding, we would be in there before that, plus there's still, there'll be still a lot of things here and there, but in general, if you're done. We're looking at somewhere around about twelve, thirteen months as far as the actual construction itself, as far as to put the walls up and everything like that, so. We just finishing stuff on the inside. Then, it's going to be weather dependent, you know, more than getting done now before the, the whole weather hits and everything is better, because they're not going to be able to lock up once it gets to a certain temperature, so, it's a lot of work. And Council for all its efforts, so, I think I want to especially thank you for waiving the fees for the demolition. Any other questions?
Thank you, President Crace.
Thank you.
Before we move on to our discussion point, I wanted to acknowledge Councilwoman O'Neill and his committee he's chairing, LTAC.
LTAC.
If you'd like to just give us a little taste of that for...
Yes. So, LTAC is the Local Traffic Advisory Committee. It is an advisory committee to council for matters of traffic and pedestrian safety, and it consists of four citizens, two of our engineers. The manager sits on that, Sergeant Polis from the Police Department sits on that, I think I've covered everyone. I have the privilege of chairing it, and we've been in place for a little over a year. And we are making, I believe, some good progress along the way, influencing decisions at council level, making the recommendations. So, while it was a slow start to get the committee together, I think now most of the folks on the committee feel that, that we are starting to make some recommendations that council can take into consideration and put into effect. So, I think we're going to give regular reports during this portion of the committee.
Thank you.
On sessions, so thank you.
Appreciate everybody who's serving on that committee. And we have discussion on the change order for the twenty-twenty-five paving program. Which one? Do I do it?
I just was, I think we should have, maybe, Mr. John, John Vizun, give us an overview of what the changes are?
Clearly...
You're a star.
So, the twenty-two-five brook program initially included about three and a half, almost two, four miles of little ways being paved in the borough. This change order is set on about one and a half miles of alleyways in the borough as well. This is done technically, after there's been a curve in sidewalk, necessarily involved, involved in this kind of departmental process. So, we're even to, maybe the best thing to the block, doing the work in the same area at the same time. We'd be changing what we bring the total up to about one million, maybe just a little bit over that. At the two million dollar bond that the borough has, maybe they can change the C, maybe they're straight C, that kind of thing. We're looking at two million dollars for anticipating the step through this program. And then, there are remaining one million dollars for their four-day, twenty-six, twenty-seven paving program, including actually church flow, that's the rest of it. The change order itself, again, is for about half the alleys that are in really bad state, probably would actually rip it somewhere out, recycling the asphalt and still, if there is stone in these cases, to better the environment. Recycling the asphalt and still, if there is stone in some cases, uh, to better the environment.
So, so just to be clear, we're adding approximately fifty percent, uh, of the amount of roadway that we're able to cover in this particular timeframe. It went from three miles to an additional one point five, a total of four point five to five miles. So, it's an increase of fifty percent of the work. We're doing fifty percent more work, um, than we would have been able to do otherwise. And one of the ways we were able to do that is by choosing roads that do not have curbs and sidewalks that need to be tended, which would add a significant amount of time to, to doing that road service. Approximately what, a year, a year and a half?
Yeah.
So, it's a significant, a significant acceleration of the work. And it's, it's a bump on the cost of the work of how much. Instead, it's gonna bring it to a total of two million, one point eight, which is two hundred thousand soft cost.
So, the original contract cost was about one point four million dollars or almost exactly one point four million dollars. So, we're looking at adding about four hundred and sixty four thousand.
So, four hundred and sixty four thousand. We're increasing the work by fifty percent. So, we're getting a lot for our money.
Yes.
Thank you. You said that beautifully.
We've all seen the, we've all seen the map, but the, the alleys you selected, you've done that. You've selected the worst alleys in the area where you can, where you're already mobilized. Is that correct? And that, that's what gets us the.
Cost.
The cost saves. The efficiency. Okay.
And it's what, seven alleyways?
Yes.
Do you happen to remember any?
South Alley, uh, Hookamara Alley, uh, Cedar Alley, uh, Weaver Alley, which is set through a couple different junctions, uh, King Alley.
West King. Eckert and Hummel. Did you say Hummel?
I would say too, uh, that you calculate the base on that, uh, is about four point seven five miles of roadway being done this year, including the alleyways, which is about seventeen percent of the borough being paved this year.
Seventy percent paved this year.
This year. So, in addition to working in two years ago, year and a half ago, what's the total?
Probably.
Over twenty five percent.
It's amazing.
Twenty five percent total, seventeen percent this year, majority of total work done in this year. And, uh, that's impressive.
So, get the rest done.
But next year, we're hanging on to it.
Could you clarify what you talked about church road? I, I understand, I didn't hear what the plan was.
So, church road, uh, we did like, I guess, discussion with the property owner, basically on kind of a delay. We're working through that with them now, uh, but as a part of that, uh, paving church road will become the final means to that project.
So, it is part of the project plan, but with some delays.
Yes. So, the idea is, so when you get all this coordinated, we acquire the property owner, um, get all the permits filed, uh, we use a portion of it, three million dollars to pave the church road. The, the bond itself won't be specifically for that, but there is money allocated for that.
Could you repeat that sort of like here, please?
Yes. So, the money we use from the bond would be specifically for the, there is other money allocated when we get forward the, uh, the borough budget, uh, for church road.
Right. So, we're not ignoring that issue. We're fixing that as well. Anything, anybody wants to add?
Any questions?
Everyone get their roller skates ready.
Thank you so much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, bring Jack over here.
Mr. Wolf, clearly, I wish Mr. Cooper's not here. Does anybody have anything from the library?
I did speak to Sue Erdman, but, uh, I'll just share that the Friends of Simpson Library dine out on Isaacs is tomorrow. Yes, tomorrow from eleven AM to nine PM. Uh, let them know that you're participating and they'll receive fifteen percent of the cost of your meal. That's Isaacs.
Thank you. Do you have anything from the school board?
Uh, they had us. So, the meeting was, um, mostly about, uh, curriculum. They did talk in, to some length at the end about the fact that they're likely gonna be raising taxes by, uh, four point five percent, which is the most that the school district has ever raised taxes. Uh, they talked about the need, uh, and why they were doing that. And, um, yeah, so it's, it's coming.
Four point five points or four point five percent of the base?
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. Junior councilperson report.
Yep. Um, so today, the Mechanicsburg music program went to camp Hill and performed in a music performance assessment. And, um, recently throughout the high school, senior class has been involved in a, in a kind of public event. It's called Senior Assassin or Senior Splashing. And it's kind of, um, a grade wide, water gun fight. But, uh, I know it's been, it's been escalating quite rapidly through some of the administrative, uh, works and even, um, public safety works because, um, the rules around where students can play this game and, uh, have these water guns is, uh, pretty strict. And, um, students are running into problems following these rules and getting into trouble with these rules on school grounds and everything like that. So, it's very interesting to see how it works through the system.
How does law enforcement play into it? I've been reading some articles in other schools that like law enforcement, um, actually was like talking to kids about making sure that their water guns were clearly not looking like, you know, anything crazy and, um, making sure that they also were telling business owners and different things like that. Have you guys been notified about this assassin game? Might I suggest that maybe, um, reaching out to the, the police department through the school in the future, like to say that? To that, I think that when I was reading these articles with community policing in the schools, that the police got in on the fun of it and making sure that everyone was safe and that no one was overreacting to kids being kids.
Sure. Um, I know that, um, a big thing was the mistake, like, like you said, the mistaking between an actual firearm or weapon and a, and a, and a water gun. So, there are a lot of restrictions as to when and where you can play. So, as of now, the rules just keep getting more, more and more strict. So, there's no play on any school grounds at any time, uh, during the school day. Um, any practices or, or games like that. And I know that, um, some law enforcement has gotten involved in citizens reporting these students being seen throughout the neighborhoods, throughout the school grounds with these, with these water guns, mistaking them as possible firearms and like that. And, um, I've heard comments about students being approached by law enforcement and being reprimanded by administration. Um, sometimes in suspensions or out of school suspensions as well.
Yeah. It's a dangerous time for kids to play with toy guns.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
What about the TikTok craze? Are you guys getting into that right now?
Um, I don't know if any more so than any time in the past.
Oh, I just heard that kids are going to the Minecraft thing and throwing flushes at each other.
Only in the movie, only in the movie theaters. Yeah.
As long as it's not happening at school.
Yeah, no.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cooper?
How many is left of school?
Uh, maybe I think it's almost a month, a, a little over a month for the seniors and then maybe a month and a half for the rest of the students.
Very cool. Community, any can have a development, Councilwoman Agarjun.
All right. Councilman Anthony, do you have anything from the loan review board?
We do not.
All right. And planning commission did not meet this last time, but they will be meeting.
They will be meeting.
Yeah, awesome. All right. Um, Harb, we did a restructuring. Um, so Allison Kitchman is now the chair. Um, we did have some reviews of signage. We did send some back for some clarification. Um, so look downtown, there'll be some changes coming in with signs. But that's really the end of my report for Harb. Downtown Mechanicsburg Partnership, a reminder that we have Earth Day. It's, hold on, hold on. Um, it's from nine to three. I always want to make sure I get the times right. And then we also have the Wine Walk coming up. So, if you are interested in the Wine Walk, um, it's May third. You need to get your tickets now. Um, because we do believe that we will end up selling out. Uh, we have more, um, participants this time and we will have some very good guest pourers. Um, you might know some of them. So, make sure that you bring people down. Um, and then I will ask Ms. Eric to come up and put in.
Yeah, I have a copy of my report. We continue our work with Paco Amigos. This is the former Harrisburg business. They've been here three times now. We've had it three different times. They're working on the build out and the design, uh, the look of the interior kitchen design. So, and then we're gonna pair them with a contractor to come up with some numbers. Who would go to our financing partners. But, um, they're very excited. They have very much appreciated the warm welcome that they have received with everyone so far. In a quarter, I talked about one twenty five West Main Street. This is the property that includes Spice, which is under agreement for sale. So, you can see the details in my report related to that. The hotel liquor license is also being transferred. It hasn't happened yet, but there's a process for that. Um, all of those people can be different parties. We don't know yet for sure. And, you know, PLTB is not required to, um, let anyone know who, for example, the applicant is other than they have a name, which like the drink beer dot com, you know, LLC or something, um, until they actually have a license or a hearing. And there's no hearing required in this one. So, um, we're talking with Tom Malios, who owns the property. He is not sharing that information now. There wasn't installed sales, sales agreement in place several years ago with the Spice owners. It, it could be them. It might be somebody completely different. We just don't know. I did tell him I would check in in a month because sometimes things change. We've seen that happen. So, we will stay on that. And if we have more information, we'll provide that. I also met with Richard Phelan, who owns the property where the gingerbread man was, twenty six West Main, to get, um, a real handle on what's going on there and prospects. I met with him in November and he indicated that he was open to first four being leased for a commercial entity, depending on the quality of the tenant and the pricing. Um, I can tell you that that's not doable, practical or going to happen. I'm working with the tenants who have the property with Hershey violins at seven West Main Street, provided them with some contractor estimate earlier. And now paint quote, they're looking at removing the peaks above Hershey violins and there's another one too. And flatten, not flattening, but angling that front overhang a little bit. So, they're looking at some of the metal roof look like products that we've seen recently through the Harb and are popping up all, all over. So, one of those, um, projects, Dick Snyder's project on West Main, uh, and on from the Harb. So, it looks very nice. They're looking into that. Susan Snips, the salon on West Main Street has sold. Still another salon, which will just be called Snips because Susan's retired. And, uh, I'm working with a chiropractor who, uh, is looking at the new borough building. Are we gonna have a name for it? I could call it Frank the Burger Place any longer, but you know what we're talking about. I should have looked at it two years ago. So, I think that's a pretty good prospect. This would be, um, she's a chiropractor. That's what I have. Anything for me?
Thank you. All right. Um, and then we'll move to the discussion on the facade improvement grants. Do, do you want to leave this discussion?
Sure. Um, so included in our packet tonight was a, guideline and application for the facade improvement grant. Um, over the last couple of months, we've met with DMP, um, and Rebecca on the process and the guidelines for it. Um, so this is just one iteration of it, um, open to any additional feedback to include. Yes, this is just generic guidelines and application for the program.
I did have a conversation with Mr. Arnold about the possibility of instead of making this a rolling grant, make it some type of deadline where there's a spring and a fall deadline, where it would be, I think, less burdensome on the administrator's time from the borough end. And it would, I think, allow the design committee of DMP to evaluate applications against each other rather than on just a rolling basis where they're kind of evaluating them just on the criteria. This would be, I think, a better approach. Um, and then it would set up a cycle where there would be an application, period to complete the work, and then another application period and then to complete that work. And then, um, I think the flow of it would, would be better and may improve the process.
So, you're thinking about like advertising for each cycle so that it's communicated?
Right. There would be a cycle and a grant application process and a grant award and then, um, the implementation period and then, that, that would be my suggestion is that we get the committee, the design committee to look at that. Um, I would, I would advocate that that be included.
So, would it be competitive project against project?
It could be if they don't have enough funds to cover the projects.
It's a very interesting idea. I participated in that program as an awardee as well as, as being on the administrative side. And it, it could stifle some programs from coming to the floor because if their timing may not line up with the open application period. That's not something that I'm knowledgeable enough about to speak to.
I also thought it may inform, it would allow the process to inform whether or not the borough should allocate more money to that program if there's a higher demand during certain grant period. We could tell whether or not, um, there's a demand for more grant money.
How many, how many periods were you thinking of during a twelve month cycle?
Two. I mean, that was my idea.
Like a spring, like a spring, fall kind of thing. Is it something the committee could, could inquire with those who have, who have helped run it before, Luke?
So, you can pick it back and discuss it.
Maybe just talk it through a little bit at the committee level.
Yeah, I, I think I'm just excited. Like, this program works really well. Um, I think taking the administrative burden off and putting it on. It's great. Um, but, but just making sure that we're supportive and getting this information out to all businesses and really just seeing more participation. Cause I do believe we allocate all of the dollars, uh, that come into this program. So, I'd be excited to see us invest a little bit more in it.
I, I, I think it's great. I do like the changes. I like the ability to invest more into it. And I think the changes that were presented are, are good ones and will help improve the program.
And these funds are protected for exclusive use in the program, correct?
Yes. Questions?
All right. Well, then that's the end of my report.
You have the property parks and recreation, Councilwoman Mark.
Um, as far as recreation and events, uh, we do have the egg hunt this Saturday, the nineteenth at four PM. That's the rain date. So, you can go to Earth Day and then you can go to the egg hunt. And then you can go see Fern Gully. Which park is that being played in?
Pink and Binder.
In Pink and Binder. Egg Hunt Memorial, Fern Gully, Pink and Binder. So, we got a whole Saturday planned out for you guys. Um, Shade Tree and EAC. Ms. Agarjun.
All right. Shade Tree, we are in prime season right now. So, on Arbor Day, we're linking up with Elmwood again. Um, and we're going to be planting some trees. Are they fifth graders? Yes, with the fifth grade class. Um, it's always exciting. I think we have six classes that are participating. So, we're gonna spread that out, um, during Arbor Day week to make sure that we get some trees planted. Um, there are other trees that will be planted throughout, um, the borough. So, keep an eye on that. I do know that they are in communication with people with the sidewalk project. And I know it's really tough conversations when those big trees are lifting up the sidewalks. So, they are taking their jobs very seriously when they're going out there and looking at it. Um, there was some conversation last time about mitigation for those large tree roots and what we could do to, um, save those trees. And, you know, we've talked about all kinds of things. There are expensive alternatives that the homeowners would be responsible for. Um, but the Shade Tree Commission is committed to replanting trees with great root, um, bases and blockers. Is that what you call them? So that the, the roots will not lift up the sidewalks. So, So I'm excited about this and I think that, of course, they're just so committed to going out there and planting trees and making sure that Mechanicsburg stays beautiful. And how many trees have we planted so far in our goal?
350 out of 500.
Yeah, so we are so close to hitting our goal, which is amazing. Will we hit it by the end of the summer? Yeah, I think Keith needs to do a little bit more. And then EAC, you guys heard about the quarry project, really excited about that. And again, big kudos to the borough staff for putting out that article and kind of heading off some of that controversy about the quarry project. Some good stuff happening, end of my report.
Great, Ms. Yerick, we do have one more thing. I skipped under Minnesota Community Outreach's review and discussion on releasing second sidewalk letter. So this would be a good opportunity to have that discussion, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, so the second iteration of the sidewalk communications is in your packet for your review. And really, we're looking for feedback before we send it out. This is the letter that is customized for each property. This is the one that will notify each property owner of the specific assessment that our codes officer made of their sidewalk. And what you have in your packet is, it's an actual letter with an actual address so that you can see the way it looks and the way that the data lays out on the page. And the intent here is remind the residents of the first letter, demonstrate for them what our assessment is of their current property, remind them of the standards and where they can find those standards on our website, and then refer them specifically to places. One, refer them to Luke if there's a comment regarding a shade tree that's impacting their sidewalk. Two is to notify them of open houses that our engineering team is going to have on sidewalk maintenance and repair corrections so that both residents and contractors can come out and hear it from the engineering team and the codes office about best practices and materials to use. And then lastly, to remind folks that communication both ways is helpful. We don't want people to be, one, gouged by contractors. And we do want all residents to ask any questions that they have about the assessment, best practices in repair, how to get inspected when they're done with their repair. And then lastly, just a reminder of the goal, which is to try to get it all done by the end of this year.
Any questions for the manager?
Just a quick comment, we talked about this resident and contractor workshop quite some time back. And it is just fantastic that it's happening and it's being implemented the way it is. That's a huge, huge thing for our residents. And thank you to you and the entire staff for making that come through, that's great.
Any other questions?
Well, if I got this letter and I saw the word "spal," I wouldn't know what that meant. How does a citizen know?
Yeah, so there are some terms that are introduced here, heaving, spalling. And it's important because it's a reflection of what's in our current ordinance. So we do use the appropriate terms. What we want to encourage residents to do is go to our website where you can match the word with a visual of what that thing looks like. It's really more important to be able to identify it on your property because you'll never use that word in conversation again. And so just read it, see that there are two of them that we see on your property, and then go to the website and look at what it looks like. And what you'll also see there is a description of what repair consists of for that problem.
See, I'm looking at this quickly, does it reference that in the letter to go to the website?
Yes.
Okay, I just missed it, okay.
Well, it says the website below, yes, so it's not separately called out as a link.
Yeah.
Moving on, Personnel Committee. Do we have anyone else here for citizens' comment? Mr. Patello?
I got coupled. Joe Patello, 21 East Factory. I used to live at 202 East Portland Street, right behind the Wall Street, sinkhole, when I called it 660. So that used to be 10, 15 feet deep there. As part of the fire company, I helped pump it out. We ran the pipe lines down with the metal pipes to the park. But now it's, I hear it's four feet.
Five feet with a lot of sediment.
And that's a big difference. That's how much dirt is going in to that sinkhole, going through the drains that go down. 90% of the water on the north side of town goes in that sinkhole. It goes down, some down Market Street and over North Side to the vet retention. But I don't know when that was cleaned out last, as far as the drain going from there to the North Side school. That's been a long time since I ran something through there and checked that out. And I don't want to see, you know, mistake made there. I'd like to see more water in there than, because that is the water table in Mechanicsburg. When I dig down in my yard, that's really the water table. That sinkhole, when that goes up, it fills in my basement, so I know all about that. That's the water table. I just wanted to make you know. And second, I'd like to see speed bumps on Factory and Green. I know no one likes speed bumps, but the way those kids play, and now with the new more bushes and trees are planted. Those kids run out and them cars come up there, hell. You know, the days of 20 mile an hour coming through there. You know, you hear them squeal the whole way up the street, so I just wanted to...
Yeah, we'll have the LTAC committee evaluate that.
Yep.
Did you say Factory in green?
Yeah, that's kind of the park, they got exits boom right out. I'd like to, you know, I watch the kids play, you know, my kids grew up there, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Anyone else for citizens' comment? Mrs. Stoner?
Warren Stone on 408 North Hill Street. What happens to the can from the bin that you currently have to try? I know I have one property, but the bin is one of those giant orange things that probably caught. I don't know, we're at $100. And they actually, there are several places that were repaired and are currently sinking again. I'm tired of bumping along the road or having to drive in the open, but we need to avoid them. Those would be Archon Simpson, just east of that intersection on Simpson and Rewon. When is the next EAC meeting?
I'm so weird. When's our next EAC meeting?
May.
May, yeah.
It'll be in Cozer Park.
Oh, yeah, and we'll meet in Cozer Park, so we...
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah.
Have we had any updates on the skate park?
No, we're still working on contracts with the donor and everything else.
The Elton people, can we probably talk to Penn Dot about having an extended green that made in Walnut?
That is on their agenda, plenty of agenda, yeah.
And thank you, all the busted pecking cans.
Have you guys gotten any tickets?
Not me, but I could have used one about two weeks ago, we wanted to win a three in one day.
Mr. Stoner?
Park 740 North Hill Street. I'm sorry, but I could not hear what he said about Church Road up there. It's very, you can't really hear anything unless you have the mic back there. The only thing I had was, I wasn't sure what you said about Church Road. I know, I think it was, I don't think it was 45 years ago, Silver Creek Township came to us and you guys asked about paying Church Road, their side, help pay their side. Now, if you're looking at doing our side, the borough side, maybe we reach out to Silver Creek Township and say, hey, we're going to do this, how about, why don't you talk more with us? Maybe we can help them pay a little bit more capital cost of those. Maybe you'll get, I didn't hear you back, and I'm sorry, it echoes back, and it was very quiet back there. I was not up there at the mic.
You guys sit closer.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Stoner. Serena?
1600 Piper Street, just some observations, I've lived in a lot of places with a lot of different refuse providers. And something that I would recommend considering is that the placement of the bins back after they move them off the curb is always, always, in every place I've ever been, right out in the road, falling over. So it's something we'll have to keep track of with our potential contractor. The other item is that I know that there are trucks out there that can lift those pillars on the back of a truck. Instead of lifting it on the side, they lift it on the back. So I know that when we're looking at contracts, consider the fact that 90% of this, we're going to pillars is a great, I hate to sound like a spirit theorist, but it's a more of a how can we do it and make more money, and not how can we do it. So please consider that.
Thank you, Ms. Mina. Anyone else here for citizens' comment? We do have a distinguished guest in the back. You have no comment? Wish no aqua blue. There being no other business, we're adjourned.